Good morning. I'd like to start today's activities with Master Sergeant Charles Phillips, the Chaplain of the Police Department, to deliver the invocation. Would everybody please stand?
Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the opportunity to gather here in this place to conduct the business of this city. I would ask today for a special blessing for our city officials and this assembled council. Father, I would ask that you would graciously grant these men and women the wisdom to lead in the midst of conflicting interests and issues, the confidence in knowing what is right and good, and the ability to work together in harmony. Father, give us the assurance of what would please you and would benefit all of those who live in our city. Thank you for the incredible blessings you've bestowed upon our community, and we would ask for continued opportunities to serve and to make this city a better place to call home. And as always, Father, I would ask that you grant us personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks as we continue to serve you. I ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to have Councilman Pettis lead us in the pledge allegiance. Councilman?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First on our agenda, we have a proclamation for Public Works. If the Public Works folks would come forward and meet me down. We have a proclamation that we'd like to present to Public Works, and I'd like the court to read it, please.
Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, bridges, traffic, drainage, public buildings, and solid waste collection. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public work departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim May 17th through 23rd, 2015, as National Public Works Week in Oklahoma City, and he calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions of public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you. Let's hear some appreciation for Public Works. We have with us the Director of Public Works, Eric Winger, and I'd like him to say a few words and introduce his staff. And y'all are only as good as your last pothole you got filled, aren't you, Eric?
We are. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, our appreciation goes out. It is National Public Works Week, and Public Works, I think, is a lot bigger than just the Public Works Department. We also need to recognize your Utilities Department, which is, of course, a lot of our water sewer and solid waste services, our Parks Department that takes care of a lot of our parks and recreation, and of course, facilities, then also Building Management, who helps make sure that all of our public facilities are well-maintained. And so, my heart goes out to those directors that assist us every day in making Public Works the best that it can be. But this year's theme is "Community Begins Here for Public Works," and so as we look at Public Works and the support of everyday life and the quality of life that we have in Oklahoma City, appreciation to you and the council. I have our staff here. We also have American Public Works Association representatives, but Debbie Miller's our Assistant City Engineer, and then Kristy Wall with American Public Works Association and the Public Works Department, and Paul Wrightboast, also with C.H. Guernsey and Company, a supporter of Public Works. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming down. Thanks for coming down. Motion second? Any discussion? Please cast your votes. It's so done. Next on our agenda is the adjournment of council proceedings, to receive the adjournment of council proceedings from May 5th and 12th, and to approve the adjournment of council proceedings on April 28th, 2015. Any discussion? And it's so done. Request for uncontested continuances, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, several this morning, starting on page 10. It's listed, but what we're going to mention again is that the ordinance on the Yukon deannexation will be deferred until June 16th. That's item 7U. And then moving to page 21, under item 9D1, item F424, Southeast 16th Street, where has that be stricken? There's a new owner. Moving to page 22, under item 9E1, 5308 Bodine, where has that be stricken? We need to re-notify. Item J, 2138 Northwest 16th, where has that be stricken? The owner has removed. Item K, 2542 Northwest 23rd Street, where has that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item L, 2100 Northwest 27th Street, where has that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item Q, 2201 Southeast 56th Street, where has that be stricken? Recent storm damage, we're going to monitor that for a rework. And then item S, 8709 Northwest 86th Street, where has that be stricken? The owner has secured. And moving on to item 9F1 on page 23, item A, 5308 Bodine, where has that be stricken? We need to re-notify. Item M, 424 Southeast 16th Street, where has that be stricken? There's a new owner. Item N, 2138 Northwest 16th Street, where has that be stricken? The owner has removed. Item P, 2542 Northwest 23rd Street, where has that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item R, 2100 Northwest 27th Street, where has that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item X, 2201 Southeast 56th Street, where has that be stricken? Again, that's from recent storm damage, and we're going to monitor that for a rework. And finally, item Z, 8709 Northwest 86th Place, where has that be stricken? The owner has secured.
Thank you, sir. We have a number of revocable permits. First revocable permit on our agenda, Action Zone LLC. Anyone here from Action Zone LLC? Seeing none, that's Ward 7, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval.
Any discussion? And it is approved. Next on the agenda, Perry Publishing. If you would, as y'all, come forward, give your name and your address, and then talk about your event.
My name is Conan Neal with Perry Publishing and Broadcasting, 1425 Northeast 23rd Street, and we're doing a Juneteenth celebration at Washington Park. This is our sixth year doing it, the fourth year at the park. It's fun, food, and music. Been a great success for the last couple of years, and trying to continue that success.
Thank you, sir. Ward 7, Councilman?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you tell us on what time that the Juneteenth celebration begins?
It starts at 10 o'clock over at 6 o'clock.
All right, thank you. With that being said, I had the opportunity the last several years to attend, several thousand of people from the community attend the event, and it's been a definitely a great success. So with that said, I move for approval.
Motion second? Please cast your votes. Thank you, sir. Good luck to you. Next up, we have a revocable permit for City Slide LLC. And that's in Ward 6, Meg.
Well, I'm surprised that nobody's here to talk about this event. Drew, do you want to come tell us a little bit about it? This is a new-to-Oklahoma-City event. It's something that's traveled around the country and...
Yes, it's a 1,000-foot slip and slide. It would be set up between, it would be on Chertel Avenue between Northwest 9th Street and Northwest 5th. They tell me they can get about 6,000 people to slide the slide. There's tickets for unlimited slides and a pair of slides and one slide, and also they're donating to a local charity this year. They told me it's Cystic Fibrosis Foundation.
So I'm sure there's some council members that want unlimited slide opportunities.
Is there any truth that the councilwoman from Ward 6 is going to throw out the opening slide?
I've heard the same rumors. I don't know.
I don't think we want to go there. Anyway, it sounds like a lot of fun, and I was glad to see the water control, and it sounds like a very sophisticated process.
Yes, all the storm drains will be covered. The water actually will be brought in, will not be taken from our hydrants. It'll be brought in on trucks and then cycles through the whole time. It's treated, and then they'll be taking it to dispose of it the right way.
Great, and do you know what the hours are? I don't remember.
I want to say that it begins at 11:00 AM.
10:00 AM till 7:00 PM on Saturday, July 25th. So I encourage everybody to come down and try something new. It's snow tubing for the summer, I guess.
It's the first type of this event that we've had so far, but they're getting very popular around the country, and we see them on social media a lot.
Great, well, I move approval.
Please cast your votes. Thank you, good luck. Next up, DNA Racing. Chad Hodges is here.
Chad Hodges, 2908 Woodstock Road, Moore, Oklahoma. We're presenting the Oklahoma City Pro-Am Classic. This will be our fourth year. It's a three-day cycling event that would take place in Midtown, Vilmaro, and Automobile Alley.
So, Chan, I'm really excited to see how this has grown over the years for the fourth year. I think some of the council may remember, I think, the first year. We started out with just one-day event, and your hope was to grow it into a three-day...
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. We've seen participant numbers grow, spectator numbers grow. Our hope is for the fifth year to be able to get it on the National Criterion Calendar, which would then, professional cyclists would have to come to Oklahoma City to race because they get points for hitting that level of race. So we think this year will give us the credentials to get on that calendar.
Great, and just for those watching, the Friday race is during H&amp;E, so it's a really neat combination, and I appreciate your working with the folks at H&amp;E to make this work. And again, our staff did a fantastic job coordinating all of these moving pieces, so I move approval.
Motion second, and it is approved. Good luck to you. Thank you for coming down. Next, we have Kathy's Market. We have a representative, Craig Travis.
Morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Craig Travis, 3004 Paseo Street. This will be our 13th year for Kathy's Market in the Paseo, Saturday, the 23rd, 24th, 25th, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Just like to see you all there.
That's in Ward 2, Councilman Shadid. Motion second, and you are approved. Good luck, thank you for coming down. Red Earth Incorporated, we have Eric Osh.
Good morning. I'm here to tell you about the Red Earth Festival, which is going to be June 5th, 6th, and 7th. We're going to kick it off with a parade through the streets of downtown Oklahoma City. We'll circle the Murray Botanical Gardens starting at 10:00 AM and expect several hundred entries in our parade and several thousand people to line the streets for the parade. When we have the Red Earth Festival, Oklahoma City becomes the center of Native American and African culture in America and draw people from all over the world.
Thank you, sir. That's in Ward 6 and 7. Motion second? Please cast your votes. You are approved. Thank you, sir. Last revocable permit on our agenda, Uptown 23rd District. Anyone here from the Uptown 23rd District? That's in Ward 2 also, Councilman Shadid. Motion second, and it is approved. That's recessed the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, six items. Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is so approved. Adjourn the OCMFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, and five items. Motion second?
Larry, if I could just make a comment. Item C, I am really happy, manager, to see the final acceptance of those ADA projects out at the fairgrounds. It's been a long process and a long time coming, and I think this closes out all of those things that needed to be done by agreement.
That's correct.
Good, thank you very much.
Any other comments or discussion?
I have a question, and I should know the answer to this, but I don't. What are the water charges to the golf system? What do they pay? They pay just regular rates based on capacity, or do they give a discount?
A while back, they weren't paying their full administrative charges back to the city, so we did this annual. I wanted to make it permanent. The Golf Commission chose to make it an annual event to put this on so we can get the administrative fees, so we can get the charges back for retiring health insurance and administrative costs that we have, and water is a part of that, sir, so they pay for parts of their water.
So the courses pay the same amount per water as an individual, based on the rate chart? I understand it has to do with volume, but...
The city pays the water trust full rate for it. I'm not sure because of the fluctuation of revenues between the Golf Commission, that the Golf Commission actually pays 100% of all their charges with water, and, you know, they pay a lump sum that goes toward administrative charges and the water, and I don't think it pays for all of it. But the city pays the water trust for all of it. And it's, as you well know, that they pay full fare for the water for all the courses, except Heffner, but Heffner, they use raw water on the lake, so there's a raw water rate that's not the same as finished water.
Right.
But it's subsidized by the city, and the city pays for the water, not the...
Again, there's the water charges and some of the administrative charges, and they pay a lump sum toward that, so they pay part of the water. It's how I look at it, but yes, there's a gap there.
Do you have a sense of how much water is being used?
Oh, yeah, we know exactly how much water is being used. I can back you on that if you want. We have records on that, obviously.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, cast your votes, and the PPA is approved. Adjourn the Oklahoma City PPA. It convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and there are three items on the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the, or Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, the item 2, the budget, be deferred for a week, or two weeks, actually, because we haven't presented that to you yet, and Marshall will present that as a part of the Utilities Departmental Presentation next week, and then we're going to prove it the following. So we just kind of got the cart a little bit ahead of the horse on this one. So I'd ask that that be deferred two weeks until June 2nd, so you have the opportunity to hear the budget presentation on it next week.
We have motion deferred to purr. Do we have a second? Second, please cast your votes, and item B is deferred two weeks. So now we have two items, one item left on the, two items left on the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Motion second? Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and the OCEAT is approved. We're going to adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene as the council meeting with a consent docket.
Motion second? Are there any individual considerations?
Mr. Mayor, 7A-G.
7A-G. Thank you, John.
And, Mr. Mayor, I had several. 7P, 7Q, 7T, and 7BC.
Okay.
V5.
P5?
V as in...
V5?
Yeah.
Just want to, Mr. Vice Mayor, I want to point out that we do have a couple of presentations this morning on AK and AL. AK is the Capitol Hill Library, and AL is the Tennis Improvements.
Okay, let's take the considerations from council. First off, John.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question relates to the timeline for the project on Northwestern. This is actually shared by Ward 7 and Ward 8, and so I just wanted an update because Mark and I have been getting calls and reference to this project, so I just wanted to get a quick update.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. So we do have work that is occurring on Northwestern Avenue from Northwest 164th to Northwest 178th, and work has been underway for quite some time. And I think one of the things that maybe our residents may not realize is that the work is actually more than just a road widening project. There's actually a lot of utility work. There was a bridge replacement and a bridge widening as well. So all the work that's been seen today was really relocating, constructing two new very large sanitary sewer lines and two water lines, and also the bridge widening, which has taken more than a year now to actually get all of those ready for the road reconstruction. Now, the weather's delayed us slightly, but the road work actually began last week in its proceeding. The project overall is going to be completed in November of this year. It's a four-lane widening of that existing roadway, so if you were to look at the timeline and just some milestones going forward this summer, they're starting on the east side of Western, starting at 164th and moving north, and that work is actually scheduled to be completed in June, the June and July. They'll move to the west side in July and August. There's some sidewalks that will then be completed in September. The sod will be one of the final things in October, and then we'll be able to punch and finalize the entire project no later than November. Now, we have seen a lot of out-of-the-ordinary weather this month, and so there are some days or possibly some weeks, but again, we're looking to finish the project by the end of the year. Appreciate the continued patience with just a complicated project.
So I'm not complaining about the rain. We love the rain, but it's realistic to tell our constituents that this will be finished by the end of the year?
Yes. You know, we also have received a few complaints about the detour road that's in place. It is a detour. It's not intended to last for years and years, but there is some maintenance that is required, and we have directed the contractor to make those immediate repairs. Just like our other city streets, it's also starting to collect a few potholes, but we're getting that contractor out there to make sure that the roadway's safe. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Sauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Item 7P, I just wanted to be sure that the public was aware that this is a call to artists for the public art for the interior of our new police headquarters under the city's 1% ordinance. We have a budget for the interior work to not exceed $40,000. Item Q is...
I had a question on that one, actually, too, because I thought that we'd already used that, the 1% for the outside monument or memorial.
The 1% will be split into two projects, the outside project and the inside project.
Okay, makes sense.
I was going to say Robbie's here if we need any clarification, but I think the major piece was the outside piece, and then this second allocation is for a smaller piece inside. Item 7Q is a professional services agreement with our friends at IQC again, and I just wanted to thank them for the work that they're doing on Classen, staff of 23rd Street. Citizens Group got together and had some issues with crossing the street and street timing signals, and this has turned into a much more substantial project. I think they've been doing great work, and so I wanted to thank them for participating with us again and working with our planning department. They're doing a great job. Item T is our annual continuum of care renewal grant, and I just wanted to mention the dollar amounts because it really is significant. This is 2,006 of federal funding coming to us to help work with our social service agencies. No city match is required for these dollars, so this is a direct pass-through, but the agencies, you know, that we work with are doing such terrific work, and we're really seeing good results, I think, in helping to house the homeless and provide services. And so I just wanted to mention, this grant reaches out to the Homeless Alliance, Hope Community Service, Red Rock Behavioral Health, City Care, Oklahoma City Metro Alliance, Community Health Centers, and Heartline amongst some others. But these agencies all are the partners that provide the services in the gaps that we have difficulty filling out of our general fund, and so I always like to mention that. And then the last thing, Pete, this is for Ward 4 and Ward 6. We're getting Maps 3 sidewalks in a number of places in South Oklahoma City, so I just wanted the citizens to know we're working on north side of Southwest 44th between South Penn and Blackwelder, east side of Southwestern between 59th and 44th, north side of Southwest 44th between May and South Penn, and the east side of South Penn between Southwest 44th and Southwest 59th, and those are all Maps 3 sidewalks. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your Honor, may I go back to item Q for just a quick comment? Councilwoman Sauer and I had the opportunity to attend the board meeting of ULI last Friday, and then I also got to attend a meeting Saturday focusing on bicycling here in Oklahoma City. And so this study along Classen Boulevard hopefully will help identify ways to improve all sorts of transportation, pedestrian as well as cycling, and this is kind of directed towards Jim. Jim, perhaps we could even extend something like this. You know, I don't think in general it's a safe environment to ride your bicycle in Oklahoma City on most major streets. I know we've done a lot in the downtown area to provide bike lanes. I'm still not convinced, or I still lack a little bit of confidence, I guess. So perhaps this study will help us to see that if we could enhance those bike lanes by putting in those plastic sticks, I don't know the technical term, you know, to help provide even greater separation. And then one thing, one of the speakers at the ULI event over the weekend was Jeff Rizm. He's with International Architect Firm, and he focused on the idea of planning or testing when they have new ideas, like he gave an example that his group worked on closing Times Square, I'm sorry, in New York City. And, you know, there's a lot of concern prior to that, but then they tested it, it did quite well, and now everybody's extremely pleased with the idea of closing Times Square. So with the idea of testing and improving our city for bicycling, perhaps we could do a study or have a test to where we would close one of the lanes, like on May Avenue from Early Wine Park to get us down to downtown. And I was thinking, you know, you could close one of the four lanes along May Avenue starting at 119th Street and go north all the way to Grand Boulevard, and then we already have the sidewalk throughout the median on Grand Boulevard that would get you from May to Walker, and then it would require closing one of the four lanes on Walker at 36th Street all the way into downtown. But to try that for a couple of months, you know, mainly with this information in mind, certainly weekend automobile traffic is much less than during the work week, and then secondly, there would probably be more individuals able to ride their bicycles for an extended period of time. I could ride to work on Saturday and back if we closed that one lane, say, from like 7:00 in the morning till like 5:00 in the evening, but it would just be used as a test to see how much additional bicycling occurs if we make a commitment to something like that. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, we can certainly look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a thought about bicycling, and I think it has actually, if anybody's been to any big city, is it safe to ride a bicycle anywhere? I mean, I've been to New York City, I've been to all, I mean, somebody from South Oklahoma... New York City. I've been to city, all, I mean, from somebody from South Oklahoma City, it's a big deal to have been to New York City. I suspect the rest of you have been there a lot of times, but I've never thought it's safe to ride a bicycle anywhere. You look at, look at the way bicycle riders do in New York City. They're in and out of traffic. The difference is, the bicyclists and the motorists all have some appreciation for the situation that they're in. I think in Oklahoma City, the problem is neither the bicyclist or the motorist have any appreciation for it. I think they don't, they just don't have the same courtesy to one another that they do in big cities. We can make all kinds of rules and lanes and stuff, but until people, till drivers start respecting bicycle riders and bicycle riders start respecting drivers, I don't think we're going to accomplish much. I think it's an attitude thing, a whole lot more than it is a public works thing.
Pete, I think that comment of yours is very important, that there needs to be a much greater respect between the two groups, the automobiles and the bicyclists. But there are other communities who have gone to great lengths to improve the safety of bicycling.
Yeah.
For example, Minneapolis has done a great job of providing some very long, in-depth bicycling trails, and I'm saying...
But they do it by separating the cyclists from the street.
And that's what I'm suggesting.
Right.
Until we find a way to get the bicyclists off the streets, let's provide the best alternative, and that's to provide a dedicated lane of traffic for the bicyclists.
I think that, I mean, if you're going to look to New York in that lesson, the lesson from New York was not just to put paint on the street and give them their own dedicated lane. It was to go to what Pete's saying, you have to have physical separation, and I think you were saying this also.
Yeah.
You have to put parallel parking in the middle of the street and then put the bikes on the other, so you have the cars protecting the bikes from the moving traffic, or New York is actually putting concrete in the street to separate the bike lane. It's not enough to just have a white line that has a picture of a bike, but actually put concrete, make investments in your bond and your street improvements to physically separate the cars from the bike lane.
Right. And again, the only reason why I'm bringing this up is just to continue the idea of testing ideas, and this would be an opportunity to test, and we may find nobody has an interest in going from far southwest Oklahoma City to downtown. I think there is an interest in doing that, and perhaps some people don't need that additional level of safety to do that, but people like me, I do. Thank you.
I think the other, the other thing that, I mean, the weather has to be right to do that, and so that's why if we're going to dedicate whole lanes to bikes, I feel like that isn't probably the most efficient thing to do whenever, for a big chunk of the year in Oklahoma City, people aren't going to ride their bikes to work. People, Minneapolis is one of the largest bike-riding cities in the country, and the weather's abysmal. It's horrible, but they ride bikes all the time.
Yeah.
Good discussion. Thank you all. Citizens who may be watching this and want to put some input in, there is a Trails Advisory Committee which deals with bike issues, and I'd encourage you to look that up and come. It meets once a quarter at the Will Rogers Park, and there's an effort, also a footage of it, not City Manager, to increase the recognition of biking in Oklahoma City and get a higher award for the condition of our biking.
There is, and Aubrey's in the audience, but the Planning Department is pursuing updating the biking segment of our comprehensive plan to take a look at the, that, a very broad look at all aspects of biking.
And so, Aubrey, we do have one individual who wants to be able to bike from South Oklahoma City to downtown, all right? So, we can put that down. We can definitely count that. What are we going on? Councilman Griner.
All right. I just wanted to highlight a street resurfacing project that's also a, also a bike lane, South Lake Hefner Drive. It is about just under three-lane miles. It's going to cost about $500,000. $250,000 of that will be paid by ODOT, so I hear a lot of, I've heard a lot of people that live in this area that say that the street is horrible, and so it's good to see that it's being resurfaced.
Thank you, sir. I wait.
Go ahead. I had another topic, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. There's an, there's an item on the agenda today concerning the plans and specifications for the Oliver Park Detention Facility at 29th and, I think that's Draper Park, not Oliver Park, but at 29th and Santa Fe. You know, the, all the flood control measures that have been put in on Lightning Creek over the last 40 years don't work. I mean, unless we have a 500-year flood once a month, we're still getting flooding in people's homes. We're still getting flooding in that park facility filled up, almost to the point where it got into homes that were left after we took about a dozen homes or so a few years ago. I wonder if we, if our calculations, if there's something, either 500-year floods occur more often than I, than you'd think based on how long 500 years is, and certainly 100-year floods occur more often, or they have in the last few years. And I really worry about the fact that we spent millions of dollars on the Lightning Creek improvements in South Oklahoma City, and it's an abysmal failure. I mean, if it was calculated to keep water out of people's houses, it's not doing it. This last time, I went to home after home after home that had water in it, backyards, water within few feet of houses. I mean, deep water, four, five feet deep in people's yards. I don't know what the answer is. We built those big detention facilities on all the little outlets of Lightning Creek, one on Santa Fe, one on Western. They're not little. They're huge detention facilities. They don't seem to slow the water up enough to keep it from backing up into people's houses. I wonder if, if this, what this 2007 thing, bond issue thing, is going to do that the last 40 years of bond issues hasn't done. It's a lot of money, and if it's not going to work, I think we ought to go back to drawing board.
Yeah, in drainage improvements, there are no absolutes. They're designed over problematic, probable rainfall events that come down the line. In the last three years, we've had, Eric, help me out, two hundreds and a 500, and so, yeah, that has not been the standard. But if those improvements had not been in, the flooding would have been tremendously worse than what occurred over there. Yes, there are still some problems there. I understand that, Councilman. I've been down there. I've seen them. I know, I know the areas you're talking about.
I agree, they probably would have been worse.
Oh.
But I've never seen, I live on, I grew up on Lightning Creek, and I've never seen water higher than it's been now. I mean, after all these improvements, I've still been in situations where I've never seen water before, ever.
So, to support the city managers...
And that's, that's not over, I can damn near get the 100-year flood deal myself. I mean, I've been, I've been there. I've lived there 70, in that area, 72 years, and I've never seen it. And I've seen big rains. I've seen, all before these improvements were there, but I've never seen it get as high as it is now, this time, after all this money, after all this delays on this project on 29th and Santa Fe, and there are financial reasons for the delays. It's not your fault, but that, when you do it with bond money, it takes a while to get things done. I understand that. But I'm just sad, I'm just worried that it isn't going to work when you get it finished.
So, a couple of comments. The last five years have been historic for Oklahoma City. There have been three 500-year events in the last five years, and then we've actually had two 100 or plus 100 years in that same five-year period. So, that's not normal, and I don't know in our Oklahoma City history that we've had such a short span of...
Wouldn't that challenge you to go back and look at how you decide that? Now, I'm not, I don't mean to personalize it by saying you, let me say we, that we, that we ought to go back and look at that if you've had that many 500-year events in that short a time?
The answer to that is yes, but we did designing based upon the 100 and some years before those.
I understand. This is a project that's going forward now. That's what this item is, to go forward with the project now. Based on the information we have now, do you think maybe we ought to look at it again and make sure that we think this money's going to be the best place we could spend the money?
The answer is yes, and I have a second comment. We are actually working on a potential revision to the drainage ordinance that we'd like to present to the council this summer. We're also looking at updating our design criteria for storms. We agree that something has changed, and we're going to need to do something a little bit different. But we also have to make sure that it's manageable, but that it makes good engineering logic. So, you know, we're going to, we're going to relook at the storm data. We're going to relook at the recent history that we've had with flooding, and then, yes, we'll reevaluate this project as well. But additional capacity of that pond at 29th and Santa Fe would absolutely help mitigate some future storms. It may not completely eliminate the chance of flooding. If we get another 500-year event, we take on another 6.3 inches in two and a half hours, it's going to flood again. But we've had other areas of the city that had the same results. I mean, that was the heaviest hit.
What I'm saying is, if you have three 500-year events in five years, maybe you ought to, maybe we ought to rethink what a 500-year event is.
But Pete, I mean, if you start using statistics, you've got to realize that when you roll the dice, every chance, it starts it over. It's a unique, independent chance of it reoccurring.
I understand that, but I, if you were going to, if we're going to redesign this project right now, today, would we design it exactly the way it is, or would we take into consideration that we've had three 500-year floods in the last, and maybe that means that 500-year floods, based on what we thought, are not what they really are? Maybe there may have 500-year flood is bigger than that, or it comes more often than that.
Staff's prepared to look at new criteria for this park and reevaluate to make sure that it's the best project for, for this pond. But that's going to be for all drainage improvements going forward, not just this one. We're looking at it citywide, but yes, we're committed to this and things that would occur after the summer if the council adopts the new drainage ordinance changes and also our design criteria manual. But we want to present you with all of the information and not just one project.
What do you, give me your, your expert opinion on what is, what is, what's the, what is it? Is it, do 500-year floods occur more often than 500 years? Do, is it, is a result of a lot of development, more rooftops, more sidewalks, more driveways than we ever thought about?
No, it's not, it's not the more impervious area. That isn't the issue. The issue is intensity of the rainfalls.
It's climatological. It's, it's nature. It's mother nature, and, and again, it's okay to get six inches of rain. We just can't take it in two and a half hours. If we got six inches over a week, we wouldn't flood. The problem was how fast we get the rain, and that's hard to control. But as a part of detention pond design, we're going to look at designing new outlets that will help reduce flood potential.
I recognize you can't control how much rain you get. You can control how big the ditch you build to carry it out, and that's my concern.
And this project makes a larger pond to help contain the 100-year and possibly even something above that. Without this work, it won't, it would not change, but we do need to do this project.
Does it do anything to let the water that ponds up out? You know, we've had a situation where the water that poned it up actually went over 29th, went over the top of 29th Street, went through that, what looks to be a fairly small outlet in a pretty good-sized pond that we're getting to make big, we're getting ready to make bigger.
So, the outlets are designed to ensure that we do not flood the downstream property owners. So, we look at historic data, historic flow rates to make sure that those are controlled. The pond helps us hold that water back to release it more slowly, to control that flooding, and this project will take that into account, yes.
And you think, you think the increase this side of this pond is going to delay the flooding where?
I think that we'll see general improvements in the area, but I will just say, if we get another 500-year event, this will not fix that.
Well, the fact is, the pond's not going to have anything to do with the houses that I saw with water in them. Not going to have anything to do with that, because it's not, it's water that's flooding their house before it gets to the pond. So, if the pond was bigger, it wouldn't make any difference, because the water's not backing up from the pond into their houses. It's backing, it's overflowing our, our facilities that take water to the pond.
So, with May 6, one of the things that we also do is we do accurate surveys of all the structural flooding, the houses that flooded, yes, South Santa Fe from 29th to 44th, and this last event was the most significantly hit area of the entire city. We've surveyed that in. We've put that into our tracking system. We've also visited with homeowners so we could get pictures and actually real data. Those are the types of pieces of information we use for the next bond issue. We plan the next projects. So, in addition to what this project is including, we're already looking at that next project for improvements that will take additional, it may be pipes under the ground. It may be additional pond. It may be possibly the purchase of additional homes that are repetitive lost structures, but I can't...
There are homes along Southwest 40th Street, west of, excuse me, east of Walker, south of Capitol Hill High School that have flooded for the last 40 years, and they still flood. All this money that we spent hasn't affected that at all. I mean, their furniture was out in the street last week, and I've seen it out in the street my whole life, and I don't understand why, with all the money that we've spent, we haven't found some way to fix that. I mean...
Pete, we have exactly the...
You know, all that, that, Councilman Bishop, one of my, one of my predecessors, who is, was really the architect of some of that Lightning Creek stuff. That was his idea to do that. He lives right on Lightning Creek. He got, there was water in his house last, this last flood. Water over the top of this giant concrete flew into his house, or his wife's house. I just, I, I, we, maybe we're designing it too small. Maybe, or maybe it's climate change. Maybe climate change is real, despite what Senator Denhoff says. Maybe it is real, and maybe we need...
Thank you, Eric. Let's move on. We've, let's, we, Pete, let's, you want to...
Well, I, but I, I want, I want to, I want to make sure that people understand that, that I personally don't think what we're doing is the right thing to do. I don't know what the right thing to do is, so I'm not going to challenge that, but I can tell you, when you just continue to spend money doing things over and over and over, and things don't get any better, and I would challenge a little bit the fact that it's better, because I've seen water, again, places I never saw it before, and I've seen it more than once there. It just, and that's just one, that's just one drainage facility, just one.
Can I ask you one question about, of course, climate change is real. The, nationally, people seem to be moving towards adaptation to climate change, not necessarily looking at what happened the last 100 years, but realizing the last 100 years might not be the best blueprint because things are changing. So, would there be utility in shortening the duration of what we're looking at? It doesn't make sense to look at tornadoes going through more before more was developed because you didn't have the heat and et cetera. Would it make sense to look at just the rainfall in the last 15, 20 years as opposed to trying to base our planning on the last 100 years because of the idea that things are changing? And going forward is going to be different than the last 100 years.
So, I mentioned the drainage ordinance, and it gets the criteria for design, but we have a companion criteria manual that our engineers actually use for the actual designs and the construction of our projects. We're looking at revising both, and the answer is yes. We're looking at the shorter-term data, the most recent events, but we're also going to look at new technologies, modern design, looking at other examples to help reduce flooding. So, what has been done, say, for the past 25 years, I do suspect that will have changes for the next 25. But we're going to continually collect the data, and the data that we're collecting locally, the things that when we're actually going door-to-door and we're surveying the marks and how high the water was on the wall, is going to help those future engineers with those projects to make sure that we're providing the best product, and that's all coming this summer. We're looking to incorporate all of this data for your consideration, summer of '15.
I guess my question still is, do you think the best expenditure of this money is to finish a plan we designed eight years ago before this recent statistical anomaly that we are, we're still going to have again this afternoon? Do you think this is still the best way to spend the money?
We're seeing flooding in this area that is for less than a 100-year event. Yes, this is money that needs to be spent to help protect the area for the 100-year event that's our current ordinance. Not doing that will, will, will most likely ensure that we will continue to flood with that lesser storm.
My thought is, it wouldn't prevent water from being in one home that I saw, not one. Wouldn't prevent, because water didn't get out of that pond and into people's homes. Well, no, it didn't. It won't save one additional flooding event if we had the same rain again that I can, that I can't see. I mean, I drove both sides of all that. The water that came into people's homes did not come out of the pond into the home. It came from, from floodways that have been in existence my whole life that we've never addressed. I just have some sympathy for somebody that's got their sofas on the, on the, on the sidewalk, and, or no, there's no sidewalks in South Oklahoma City, I'm sorry, on the curb, and, and they've been paying this drainage fee for a long, long time, and it doesn't seem to have made any difference to them.
Councilman Griner.
I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay.
I'm done, yeah.
Okay. I thought you were ready, Eric.
We do, we have a couple of reports this morning. We'd like to start with the presentation on, on Capitol Hill Library, and we have some representatives from Gernsy with us this morning, David Omen and Brian Durbin.
Good morning. I'm Brian Durbin with Gernsy.
David Omen with Gernsy.
We'd like to present a quick slideshow here on the findings and the results of the design effort that we've put together on the Capitol Hill Library renovation expansion And we're gonna discuss three things here. We're gonna discuss the scope, the budget, and the schedule. The project's scope involves three main components. So, we've got land acquisition, site development, renovation, expansion of the existing structure, and the fourth component is the library fixtures, furnishings, and equipment component. Item one, the land acquisition, involves the acquiring of adjacent sites to the existing facility for the expansion of parking, as well as the addition to the existing structure. Site development, number two, is going to be the development, the design of those acquired sites for additional parking, and a trade-off between the existing bank facility and the library and the city to mitigate parking loss as a result of the expansion onto the bank parking area. Number three, renovation expansion of the existing structure. We will be doing a significant structural and architectural alteration to the existing facility. It is a 1951-era concrete structure and brick masonry building. We're going to be doing a complete gut and retrofit of that entire structure, which will include roughly 9,200 square foot of addition to the east of the existing facility. And the fourth and final component will be a complete interior fit-out for fixtures, furnishing, and equipment. Shelving, furniture, all of the equipment that's needed for the proper function of a library. This next slide shows the existing condition of the building. Again, it opened in 1951, so you're seeing finishes and forms that are reminiscent of the era. Exposed concrete structure, brick masonry, and conventional glazing. The next slides we're gonna look at, you're going to start to see how we are altering that site in the facility. This is a map of the area. This is the, the north boundary, this is 26th Street. South boundary is 27th Street, and this is Hudson to the west. Here, you're seeing the existing structure. Here is the new addition to the building. This is the existing parking lot that is shared by the bank and the library. We are actually going to acquire this site for the addition of the bank, or pardon me, for the addition to the library. And then, the project is acquiring this portion of the city block of existing and abandoned home, home sites, that will then be the new parking facility and area that will be shared by both the library and the bank. This is a preliminary schematic site design for what we're planning on doing with that site. You'll see here, you've got the existing library component, the new development or addition component, which sits on that parking area, the existing bank parking to remain. These are the existing old home sites that are being turned into the parking for the new library. This area is going to be redeveloped and then given back to the bank to mitigate the loss of the parking over in this area. So, this is going to be bank parking, this will be library parking. Here are some conceptual renderings for what the bank, pardon me, what the library will look like when it is completed. We're actually taking the building and flipping it from an orientation standpoint. The current entrance is on the south side, pardon me, on the north side of the building, off of 26th Street. We are now moving the entry down to the south side, off of 27th Street, off of the new parking element. So, this top view is looking from the 27th Street intersection, south, pardon me, northeast, at the new entry element, and what the new facade is going to look like. This area over here is the existing structure. The area to the right, that would be showing the, the addition. The second view on the bottom, this is on 26th Street, looking southwest. To the left here, this would be the parking area that's going to remain for the bank. This element is the addition, the roughly 9,000 square feet addition. This is the existing structure that we are altering. You'll see, you've noticed from the previous images and this one, we're doing a pretty significant alteration in the architectural vocabulary for the building in terms of the style and color, and how it's going to start reacting with the community. Pretty extensive in terms of the color of brick, the style of the building, but in essence, we've, we've maintained those parts and pieces in the same capacity in terms of its masonry, exposed concrete structure, and, and glazing. Here is a floor plan showing the, the planned layout for the space. Again, this is the southern new entry, the, the new parking lot just to the south here, 26th, 27th Street, and Hudson here to the west. Large community space, library administrative and functional capacity, and then the rest of it will be the floor for the, for the library's collection, study carols, study areas, computer, internet access, all of the things that you'd find in a current and modern library. Recently visiting the library at about 3:00 on a Wednesday, the facility as it stands now is jam-packed with elementary school kids. So, we really see that this is gonna be a really nice improvement and advancement for the library in that particular part of town. Project budget and schedule. The project budget, when the, the project first began, was set at just over $4 million. As of right now, at this particular phase, we've just completed the preliminary report phase of the, the design process, we're sitting at roughly $3.5 million. We expect that number to alter a little bit as we get further into design and some of the struc, the structural requirements for the project become more real. But right now, we are tracking to be on budget. As far as project schedule is concerned, we just wrapped up the preliminary report, which is where we are at this moment in time, spring of 2015. The next phase of the project will be final plans and construction award. We have started the process of construction documents and plan on completing and awarding the contract in the fall of 2015. We expect for construction to begin shortly after that, in the winter of 2015, with roughly a 400, 450-day construction timeframe, which would put us at completion and FFNE installation in the spring of 2017.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One is, do you have a hard copy of that presentation you made?
Yeah.
I'd like to have one, if I could.
Absolutely.
I don't have to have yours, but I mean, I.
You can, you can have this one.
Okay.
Actually, it says right on here, it has your name.
But I'd like to have one. The other concern I have, you mentioned being there at 3:00 in the afternoon. That, that's one of the things, having been there at 3:00, 3:15 in the afternoon is one of the reasons I've, that I have been a strong advocate for expansion of this facility. But the reason those, it's full at 3:30 or 3:15 in the afternoon is because all the children at Capitol Hill Elementary School get out of school. Has any thought been given to making it safer for them to get there? I mean, some kind of access across Harvey, some kind of access? Because it, it's gonna happen. I mean, that's why they're there, is they kind of get out of school, nobody can pick, there's nobody to pick them up. They, they, they're not, they don't go home when they go to school until somebody comes and gets them, I mean, they go to the library until somebody comes and gets them. So, they're there from about 3 till about, some of them are there at the latest 5:30. And because of the, the school is now keeping the playground area open, it would seem to me there's some likelihood of people continuing to come back and forth there. Has any thought been given to designing it in such a way that that could be safer?
While we're sensitive to that, this particular project and the components of it don't specifically address that, but we believe that the way we've oriented the building and some of the functions of it help maybe address some of that to some degree. As far as traffic path and, and, and traffic from the school over, I, I can't say that we specifically address that in terms of a safety factor.
Councilman, that's probably beyond the scope of their, of their, certainly, but Eric can certainly look at that.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I, what I'm gonna, what I was gonna say next is, I do, I do understand that, but, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to me not, not to think about it in the process, because that's where those, I'm saying it again, Arnaud. The, that's why those kids are there, and that's how they get there. So, to ignore that on this scope thing doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I know it's not your job, but this gentleman right here, you can get together and talk about it, and you can make it better.
Sure.
Because it, it is not a good situation, the way the, the back of the school is fenced, there's not a crosswalk there, it just needs to be better.
Agreed. And let us look at that as another, you know, war for project that we can start working on, and, and not necessarily with the library, but in conjunction with the library.
Okay. And because of that reason, it seems like the parking lot is really big for the, you know, I can totally understand that the library would get packed, but is the, is, is that too much parking? Or is it, have you done some sort of study to show?
Oh, absolutely.
That that is the right number of parking?
We're using the city's required parking.
Oh, okay.
Ordinance, and the, the number of parking stalls is directly related to the square footage and the capacity of the building.
Right.
And it's based on kind of a worst-case scenario, if the place was absolutely maximum occupied, and everybody that was gonna be there was in a vehicle. So, I mean, and it takes into factor, you know, some of those variables, but yes, the, the parking lot is designed specifically for the purpose of and function of the building.
Parking is really a premium in that area, too.
Yes, we, we discovered that with, when we suggested to take part of the bank's parking.
Right.
Are you gonna put in some bike racks?
Pardon me?
Are you putting in some bike racks?
Yes. I mean, the, the, the idea is that this is gonna become an anchor in the community for, obviously for children, especially in the area, but, but for everybody. And the idea, and this ties back to the bicycle component, you know, part of the cultural shift that, that we're, as designers, are trying to help change the idea of how bicycling is. So, it is a, it's a foregone conclusion and, and a, an absolute that all the buildings that we design, particularly community facilities, all have a biking component built into them just for that purpose.
Excuse me, did you mention, is there going to be a new meeting room or a community room?
There is a meeting, community room in the facility.
What's the capacity for that?
I would have to get that back to you on that, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, I think that's an important component, and while meeting rooms.
Can you pull that back up for us?
You hate to commit that much space to a facility for a meeting room. With a library, you can just move tables in and out and use it as a reading room, and then when it's required to be used.
If you'll look right here, I mean, I would say it's 150 people. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, I mean, it's, it's roughly the size of this room.
Okay.
I mean, it'll, and I believe it can be divided, so that it can be two separate rooms.
Good. Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the next presentation is from ADG, and Aaron Denker is here to talk to us about the improvements to the Will Rogers Tennis Center.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Aaron Denker, I'm with Architectural Design Group, ADG, and wanted to talk to you about the, the improvements for the Oakland City Tennis Center. The, the project's scope is really to add outdoor courts to the existing facility, and with the increase of those courts would add more space for the tournaments and events that are currently held at this facility, in addition to youth-sized courts to work with their youth programs. And secondly, would be providing a indoor facility that would enclose six courts that would allow tennis play in inclement weather and during the, the winter months, so it'd increase kind of the, the length of, of times that people could go play tennis at this facility. To give you an idea of the, where the site is located, it's bounded on the west side by North Portland Avenue, on the north, Northwest 36th Street. The existing site has 24 full-size tennis courts, an existing clubhouse to the south and west. And again, all this area is within the Will Rogers Park area. So, again, the, the bounding line that you see is really kind of the fence line that separates the, the tennis center from the rest of the Will Rogers Park. The phases one and two will be located on the southeast side of the tennis center. The outdoor courts, there'll be two full-size courts added to the east end of some existing courts, and another full-size courts, court with six youth-sized courts in an area that is currently, does not have any courts, but due to the size of the youth courts, there are three existing courts that will be demoed to make way for the youth courts. And again, as you see in the Phase Two, the, the indoor court facility. That's a real overview of the Phase Two, again, the outdoor courts, noting the demolition of the three existing courts for the construction of those youth courts. Phase Two is really the building for the six courts. There's a little leg going up to the existing path between the, the two courts in Phases One, and that is really a ramp and access to the rest of the facility, because the courts are at a different elevation, and so we're providing that, that access to the existing pathway. And we've got some renderings of the facility with the outdoor courts, the indoor courts, the view from the southwest, we've got a view from the, the southeast. One thing that I did not mention, again, the building to the right is the existing senior center that's at the Will Rogers Park. And then, again, a better view of the outdoor courts and a view from the northwest of the building facility. The project budget and estimate for this project, right now, the budget for Phase One is $520,000. The Phase Two budget was $2,775,000, for a total of a little over $3 million. Our estimates for Phase One is $519,000, and our Phase Two, we're estimating at 2.9, with a total of 3.4 million. And with the overage that's shown in this estimate, will be addressed with, within the design of the Phase Two project, and any add alternates that can be done in, in the project to get within budget.
If you recall, this is a unique project. Mark Allen, as you were, is, is generating half of the funds for this privately, and the other half are generated by city funds. We're thankful for Mark and the efforts that he's put into this project. This is a, a unique, unique project for us.
And that's really the, the intent of the, the Phase One and Phase Two, is the Phase One is done by the, the funds from, from Mark Allen's effort, and the Phase Two would have the, the matching city funds attached to that. So, again, the project's schedule, in February, we begin the Phase One construction, again, with, with the donation or the, the private funding. And in May 2015, the Phase One construction will be complete. We're sending, again, the, the preliminary report in May of this year, and in June of 2015, completion of Phase Two, final plans. We have June of 2015 for bid opening, and in July of 2015, the word of contract to begin construction, and construction completion, we're estimating at November in 2015. One other added item to this project is kind of a master plan that we did for the, the tennis center, and it was a proposed Phase Three, which is a new clubhouse. If you can recall, in the, in the site plan, the clubhouse was on the southwest corner, and, you know, the, the land that was available to. the land that was available to build the indoor courts facility was on the east and southeast side, so having somebody track from the clubhouse, you know, was not really benefiting anybody. And in Phase III, we're proposing a clubhouse right against the, or adjacent to, the indoor facilities, and that would provide kind of another entry to that facility. And again, that's really kind of explaining where the existing clubhouse is at, and again, to get to the indoor courts, the travel path that they would have to take through the existing courts and down the ramp to the building. What's highlighted in red is the Phase III, which is the clubhouse to house administrative area, snack bar, you know, pro shop. And again, the long leg to the left, again, in the master planning phase, is an observation deck for those four courts that are to the north, so it adds another level of interest to the people that come to see tournaments that can use that observation deck. But again, that's all in Phase III.
Any questions from the council? That's all we have this morning.
Is Phase III, does that, that doesn't have funding yet?
That's correct, it is unfunded.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, that concludes, I guess, the discussions and the information on the consent docket. We had a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and the consent docket is approved. Concurrent docket.
We have a motion to second.
Is there any individual consideration on the concurrents docket? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and the concurrents docket is adopted. Items requiring separate. Attention. We have some zoning cases. First one up is an ABC 2, ABC 830, in Ward 3.
Robert Sheets, Philip Murrow, on behalf of the owners, address is 101 North Robinson, 13th floor, Oklahoma City, 73102. It's, I believe, it's been recommended by approval by the Planning Commission, it is a hotel, a home suites, our Homewood Suites, it's at Reno and Rockwell approximately, and we're seeking a permit for beer, wine, and mixed beverage use.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, has anybody signed up? All right, please cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you, sir. Next up is ABC 831 and ABC 2 in Ward 6. Is the applicant present?
No applicant. Well, this is on Southwest 29th Street restaurant, the application is to permit beer, wine, and mixed beverage sales, new restaurant called Los Sagravés. Planning Commission recommended approval, there were no protests at the commission, and this is certainly an area that's got lots of restaurant activities, I would move approval.
Motion to second, has anybody signed up? Any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Next is PUD 1569 in Ward 7. The address is 1100 Northwest 192nd Street, going from PUD 435 to PUD 1569. John?
Correction, Mr. Mayor, it's actually, even though on the agenda it says Ward 7, it's going to actually be in Ward 8, so I defer to my colleague.
All right, we'll take that.
This is an ordinance on final hearing, it is actually in Ward 8, it's a mixed-use commercial development. I know the applicant is here today, there are no protesters that I'm aware of, the applicant made efforts to meet with some of the concerned neighbors and came up with a solution that included an eight-foot-tall fence with brick columns. Unless any of the council have questions, I'd move for approval of the item.
Motion to second, any comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and it is approved. All right, we'll change our operation. Is this Ward 1?
Yes, yeah.
This is tricked a new guy. PUD 1575, James.
Yeah, this is an area that's zoned AA, and the PUD will have a base zoning of RA, past the Planning Commission 7-1. I feel like it's compatible to the area. I know the developer's here, if you've got any questions, but I'll move for approval.
We have a motion to second, any questions? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you, James. Next up, Ward 8, Mark.
Yes, sir, this is an ordinance on final hearing, it's for the additional residential uses to be performed at the existing airport called Sundance Airport. There is a representative here today for the applicant, but I would tell you that the Planning Commission approved this unanimously, there are no protesters at the Planning Commission, and I'm not aware of any protesters here today, so I would move for approval.
Motion to second, any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. And again, Ward 8, S P U D 816.
I guess I'm on again. Sorry, sorry, I was trying to answer a question, I apologize, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing, it's for an assisted living and memory care facility, it went before the Planning Commission, it was unanimously approved, there were no protesters at the Planning Commission, and I'm aware of no protesters here today, so I'd move for its approval.
Motion to second, any discussion? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Item B is an ordinance on final hearing, closing a planted utility in Ward 3. Has anybody signed up? I move for approval. Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Next up is emergency to erect a telecommunication tower in the R1 Single Family Residential District at 600 Southwest Grand Boulevard, Ward 4, Councilman White. Anybody signed up?
I have one question about this. The reason that this needs a special permit is just because it's not more than a half-mile away from the other, are we in a, do we, have we discussed whether or not that rule is even needed anymore, or like, what was the reason for that rule?
Well, the towers are conditionally used, if they meet a set of conditions, one's the separation, then they can be approved by staff administratively. The distance requirement was one of the things that we looked at when we did the ordinance, we haven't relooked at it on the separation, I mean, we could do that if --
Because I don't know when that ordinance was passed, and, you know, I know that, you know, cell towers are increasingly needed and needed and needed because of increased uses, so I don't know if we need to relook at that distance or not. Just a thought.
We had a motion to second, did we not, Councilman White, on this? Second? Please cast your votes, and it is approved. Thank you, sir. Item D1, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to any item on D1? Motion to second, and it is so ordered. Item E, public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Has anyone signed up? Anyone here to speak to any item under unsecured structures? View it, sir, give us your name and address, and then tell us which item you'd like to speak to.
Yes, sir, my name is David Miller, my address is 2815 Southwest 110th, Oklahoma City, and I'm here to speak in regard to number E. It'd be on E on public hearing regarding unsecured structures. I got that secured on Saturday, and I provided pictures, and then also, it backs up to an alley, and we cleaned up over 40 tires that had been dumped on us from that alley. And then, I think it's also on public hearing regarding abandoned buildings, so we got it secured and we got the trash picked up then. I provided a sheet of paper showing how much we paid to have it cleaned up, and pictures showing that we'd secured the building and also removed the tires.
As soon as we checked that, by process, we cleared it off.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Motion to second, please cast your votes. Item F, abandoned buildings. Any other citizens would like to speak on item F? See, we have a motion? A second? Please cast your votes, and it's so done. Item G, do we need executive session on this?
No, we do not.
We have a motion to second, anybody signed up? Please cast your votes, item G is taken, approved. Item H, we do not need any action on this?
Yes, correct.
Move to strike, second? And item H is struck. Claims recommended for denial. Anybody signed up? We have a motion, a second? Please cast your votes. And item I is taken care of. Claims recommended for approval. We have three claims recommended for approval. We have a motion to, a second? No signed up? Please cast your votes, and they are approved. Items from council, Mark, let's start with you, sir, if we could.
I'd just briefly like to thank the Northwest Oklahoma City Chamber for inviting me to their breakfast last Friday, I thoroughly enjoyed that group, very engaging and a very progressive group. Secondly, last Wednesday, I was invited to speak at the 30 Under 30 Program, and it was really encouraging to meet a lot of young, bright people who have chosen Oklahoma City to live and work, and so I want to thank them for that invitation.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received word that test scores are definitely up in our public school system, so I look forward to getting those test scores, hearing more about the test scores from Oklahoma City Public Schools and also the other public schools that we have in the Oklahoma City area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
A couple of quick things, Mr. Mayor, one is, we've certainly had a robust conversation about flooding today, and Pete, you're not alone down in Lightning Creek. David's office over at 4th and just behind the Civic Center was flooded with all those properties at 4th and Francis, 4th and Walker, they're all sandbagged. I attended a neighborhood meeting that Friday evening, and I really just, I wanted to thank Eric and Craig Keith for attending. They got blasted, which you would expect, it was a fairly unpleasant hour, we're trying, I think the neighbors understand that we're trying, but we're in an awkward time of change, and I think we're seeing more rain incidents than we ever have before, and it's complicated. So I appreciate taking a look at these ordinances and seeing if we can maybe focus on redesigning capacity for what we seem to be experiencing, so I think that's a great idea. I wanted to congratulate the Oklahoma City Public Schools Teacher of the Year from Star Spencer High School, Samantha Murch, was selected by the Foundation for the Oklahoma City Public Schools, and she's the drama, speech, and soccer coach at Star Spencer High School, and there were eight other fantastic candidates. I think they had a very hard choice to make, and I just wanted to congratulate the Miller Neighborhood, they had a very successful house tour on Sunday, as did Lincoln Terrace. So, thank you.
Your Honor, I want to clarify something, I was not a part of that group that blasted our Public Works Department Friday evening.
[laughter]
I understand the problems we all have here, and it actually helps when I go out to visit neighborhood associations, I can be more empathetic to their issues. But going back to our earlier discussion concerning indirectly bicycling, a point, again, that I think really needs to be kept in mind, I'm not suggesting we will have a MAPS 4, but should the council ever decide to move forward with another MAPS initiative, what I'd like to see happen is that we take that idea of testing some of the ideas prior to the actual implementation of any particular plan, and again, the architect, Jeff Rizem, really gave some great examples of how his firm was able to test ideas prior to implementation. And then, secondly, if we can ask for groups to be a part of that planning process, such as ULI, and then the University of Oklahoma's Institute for Quality Communities, I think it just brings credibility and it also brings a perspective that perhaps we've used them in the past, I'm not sure, but I would just encourage us to invite those two groups to any planning session if we were ever to begin looking at a MAPS 4 initiative. And final comment, you know, each time I go to these types of meetings, I hear it more and more often, Oklahoma City should no longer try to compare itself with cities down in Texas. You know, 25-plus years ago, we would always compare ourselves with Tulsa. Well, we've certainly surpassed that city, and we're surpassing, in many criterias, cities down in Texas. We need to compare ourselves with the other world-class cities throughout the world. Thank you.
Ed?
Well, I'm really excited about a town hall meeting we're going to have this Thursday night at the Tower Hotel, which is right across from Baptist, Integris Baptist Hospital. This Thursday night, from 6:30 to 8:30, we have two national speakers coming in to talk about tax increment financing. One is Greg Leroy, who is the Executive Director of Good Jobs First in Washington, DC, and the second is Pete Brzyski, who owns and operates the website called OKCTalk.com. Tax increment financing has its proponents and detractors, and there is a debate raging throughout cities in America. The state of California has banned the practice, they're the ones who started it. Every state in America seems to have moved away from its original purpose of addressing blighted neighborhoods. We just had a Supreme Court case in Missouri where an affluent neighborhood argued that they were blighted because they didn't have a Nordstrom in a shopping mall, and incredibly, they won, and were able to use tax increment financing to finance the placement of a Nordstrom. So, this is not unique, the debate is not unique to Oklahoma City, and there are a lot of similarities between Oklahoma City and cities throughout the country, and I think these speakers will be able to speak to both of that, as to best practices and ways that we can improve. Talking to them and kind of reading of recently, my feeling is that the tax increment financing program in Oklahoma City needs comprehensive reform, not tweaking, but really top-to-bottom comprehensive reform. And I think the time to have that discussion is urgent, and it's right now, really, for three reasons. One, we're talking about an incredible amount of money, hundreds of millions of dollars. If we were to implement all the TIFs in the pipeline, Cord Ashore, a TIF within a TIF for a convention center hotel, the Wheeler District, First National Center, and others, combine them with the nine that we've already created, you're talking about something very similar in size to MAPS 3, but without anything like the oversight of MAPS 3 with all its subcommittees and advisory panel, but hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. But what makes it so hard to predict is the long duration of 25 years. TIFs by statute can be zero to 25 years, and we always pick 25 years, even though we're flying past the original authorized budget. The downtown TIF number two was created in the year 2015 years ago with an authorized budget of $47 million. We've flown past that, we've now collected twice that amount. In another 10 years, we could hit 300% to 400% of that target number. But there's really never a public discussion about whether we should end the TIF, we just continue it, even though we're flying past our projected numbers. There's no telling how much development you would get in 25 years around a Cord Ashore Park that you're using $130 million of public investment to get the development going. There's no way we can predict with something that long. So we're talking about an enormous amount of money. The second reason to talk about it urgently is that my feeling is that nobody really understands it. There's only a handful of people in the city who really understand how this program works and who are operating it, and that starts with me. I don't understand it, and if people are looking to me to make policy, I don't have an adequate understanding of what's happening in other cities, I certainly haven't over the last four years. And I think it's very complicated, it's very difficult for me to understand. I struggle reading through it, and I need help. And I need people from other cities to explain to me what the best practices are, because I don't have enough information. I think the media, particularly the Oklahoman, consistently mischaracterizes tax increment financing, constantly referring to that this is new development, without pointing out that we're diverting money from existing buildings, existing property. Just inflation alone would cause an increment. Every time you sell a building, the property tax will increase. Appreciation, all those things haven't been talked about in the media. There's nothing on the, there's no website that says how you, who and what qualifies for tax increment financing awards. There's nothing that says how much we've spent. There's nothing on our property tax bills, as they do in Chicago, that says exactly how much money is being diverted into TIF accounts. And what's painfully obvious is that the school board and those advocates for education clearly don't understand the process. That's very clear that the school board doesn't understand it, the superintendent doesn't understand it, the school board chair doesn't understand it. They still don't understand, even yesterday, I was speaking with some of them, there's $12.5 million sitting in a bank account. It's been diverted, it's sitting in a bank account. They don't understand, is it for education or is it for all the taxing jurisdictions? It's been sitting there for years, they haven't drawn down on it, they haven't even known that it's there. Can they spend it within the TIF district or out? How can you have $12.5 million in a bank account for education and nobody's drawing down on it because they don't even know it's there? I mean, that alone would be a red flag that something's wrong with the system. And that's the third reason to talk about it urgently, is because education is where the bulk of the dollars are being diverted, more than 72% from public education, I-89 and Metro Tech and other education vehicles. The bulk of it is education. And we talk in slogans, we're all, I think, very good, including myself, the chamber, about we have this three-legged stool, that education is an economic development driver, that we have to have a skilled workforce, that good schools are a recruitment tool for corporations to come to Oklahoma City, and that it's the key to neighborhood revitalization and an increase in our property values. We all say that, but then, as, when we have economic development meetings and when we have economic development efforts, the school board's not there, the school advocates aren't part of the conversation. I don't think any of these TIF committees or any of the TIFs have ever met after they were originally created, except maybe for downtown TIF number two. I don't even think they're meeting. I don't think they've ever met, except in the very beginning. So getting them brought up to speed and part of the negotiations about what these are going to look like in the future and bringing them to the economic development table, we either believe that they're an economic development tool or we don't. If we do, then we need to bring them into the conversation. And so that's why I believe this is very urgent, I think it's very timely. And I think everyone who attends on Thursday night will find it very, very impressive and the information very telling. Thanks. That's the Tower Hotel across from Integris Hospital this Thursday night from 6:30 to 8:30. And there'll be lots of time at the end for questions from the audience.
Councilman Griner, thank you, Councilman Shadid.
Okay, a couple of quick things from Ward Three, if I might. Past Thursday night, Councilman Pettis and I had the privilege of attending the Neighborhood Alliance Leadership Graduation. And now time for a class commercial for Ward Three at one of our finest gems, Castle Falls Restaurant. The leaders who had gone through Georgie's training received their diploma. And Georgie had challenged them at the beginning to do something that had, I thought, profound impact and very heartwarming to hear the stories. Every person who attended the seven-week session was told to pass on something to somebody else, an act of kindness or a project or something that would benefit that person. And then they were required to report back at the graduation what they had done. And the stories of the lives that were encouraged as a result of people just taking other neighbors' garbage cans and taking them out in the morning and back in the evening to help people out, doing maintenance on houses and other acts of kindness was just a great thing. And so my hat's off to Georgie and the leaders for their participation in that. And then also, this coming week, there is a neighborhood meeting, not in competition with the TIF, but the Windsor Forest is having a neighborhood meeting Thursday evening. So if you remember that, choose whether you're going to go to Councilman Shadid's symposium or your own neighborhood meeting, but go to one or the other. And then the Northwest Chamber of Commerce is starting a new activity, coffee with the councilman, patterned after the South Chambers. And Councilman Stonecypher came by and met the people there. And they were very encouraged to see him come by. And they had a good dialogue afterwards on things that were going on in your city. So that concludes my comments. We're now ready for citizens to be heard. We have somebody's...
I'd like to make a comment about something Councilman Shadid said about tax increment financing. You know, this may be too little, too late, and I fully appreciate that because I too share concerns about the way it operates, just the details, the down in, digging down deep into it and finding out how the details work. But there has been a discussion, a week ago, yesterday, there was a discussion with the board members that I attended by people from the Alliance and people, city employees and attorneys that have something to do with it. And there's been, there's a real effort, I believe, at this point, to reach out to the I-89 and try to make them more aware. It is, it was very frightening to find out what they didn't know. And I would share that with you all. It was, and there are lots of reasons for that. And I think the very, the lowest ranking, if I was to rank all the reasons for it, would be, would, I would put blame on the board. I think there's a lot of reasons they don't know it, but it's not because they haven't been told. I mean, in a great deal, it is because they haven't been told. The opportunities have not been there, there's been no continuity in the communication system. But I think we're trying to fix that. I mean, this, the meeting that we had last, a week ago yesterday, was an extremely good meeting. It was a first meeting, intended to be a first meeting. And I think, as Ed says, they are the largest contributor of funds to the TIF. They are the single largest contributor. They, by themselves, I believe, contribute over 50% of the funds that go into the, that's available for TIFs. And they ought to be at the table, they ought to understand it, their board should understand it. And I think that was recognized. Kathy O'Connor was there, and I think right off the bat, she said that. She recognized that there were deficiencies in the communications and we need to try to fix them. And I'm optimistic that, that once the communication increases, we'll be able to determine with some specificity the changes that Ed alluded to, without being specific about what the changes are, we'll know what those are. And I think some of them are coming out, some of them came out at the very first meeting. For example, the, some of the TIFs have geographic boundaries where I-89 can spend the money. And nobody now knows, understands why that ever was there. But it restrict, they have needs all over the district. The entire district suffers when they, when they have a reduction in total taxes. And, but there was restriction in the area they could spend the money. And so I think future TIFs will not have that restriction in them, which will be a really good deal for the district. Just one example, and that was right, the very first thing that happened, that question was raised. And I think it's things like that will move us forward to have a better understanding of if something needs to be done, what it is, rather than just kind of a shotgun approach to it. I don't mean that's your approach, but I mean, that's the approach, if you just say, we got to make changes. At some point, you have to figure out what kind of changes you're talking about. And I think that this series of meetings that we hope to have with the I-89's board and top administration will get us to that point. I think we're on a good path, really. And I think, it's like everything else. The public has a right to know about it. I mean, and that, that lack of knowledge on the part of everybody concerned, me included, fosters a lot of beliefs that may or may not be right. Just if you don't know, well, you just, it's easy to jump to a conclusion, well, I don't know, and the reason I don't know is because somebody don't want me to know, and they don't want me to know because something else is happening, which none of that may be true at all. But until you know what it is that you don't know, it's hard to make good decisions, so.
Just a quick comment also, I think the other thing that's important is it said there weren't any meetings with regard to TIF, but the TIF program's managed by our Economic Development Trust, and they meet every month. And anybody can come to any of those meetings, so there are lots of meetings.
I think though, Meg, I really think that we have an obligation as public servants to make sure they know. The invitation of something as sophisticated as TIF financing, the invitation is to come on down, doesn't work. I mean, we've got an obligation to make sure they understand. And I think that's, and that's what, and I agree that they could. And that's why I say the blame is hard to place about why they don't. But, but we need to, we just, we need to fix it. Pointing fingers about who did it and why that's done is really not going to be a good solution.
Yeah, and I think part of the reason why Oklahoma City Public Schools have struggled, because if you look at the leadership within Oklahoma City Public Schools, they have changed over a course of time. Because I know, for example, when the previous chair of the school district, she was very hands-on involved for its TIF. So when that leadership changed, nobody, I guess, nobody probably took the time out and said, hey, Chair, this is exactly what's going on. Now, I can only talk about the TIF that I'm actively involved in, but at every TIF meeting that we have had, Oklahoma City Public School District, they've been there. But I think it's up to their staff to also go back and relay it, not only to the superintendent, but also to their board. But again, I can only speak for the TIF, TIF District Nine, but I think that part of their responsibility lies on the destiny of the school district to go back and to report. In my TIF, for example, I do have Oklahoma City Public Schools, but I also have Middale. And Middale has been very active, involved in the Northeast TIF District. And a matter of fact, I can remember sitting down with the superintendent of Middale and she actually thanked us for coming in, talking to her and explaining everything from A to Z. Because, for example, when Midwest City created Third TIF, they didn't, they didn't work with the school district or whatever, that line of communication wasn't there. So I think, are there some things that need to be improved? Absolutely, yes. But I think to the school district, whoever their representative is on that TIF has the responsibility to go back and to report to the superintendent and to the school board members. For example, Metro Tech. Metro Tech sends either one or two staff people at the, for example, the Northeast TIF District. I do believe that it's up to elected officials for us to communicate with other elected officials within those tax jurisdictions. But at the same time, whoever sits on the TIF Review Committee has the responsibility to go back and report to their superintendent and also to their board. And I think that's some of the things that's been lacking.
I don't think there's any question. And I think in, as a compliment to you, you're probably more involved in the actual workings of that TIF than any councilman is in any, of any other particular TIF. And the result of that has been that the other taxing entities probably know more about that one than they do some of the others. In the past, it's, it's, well, we just, this suffice it to say, I think we need to do a better job. And you're doing a good job with that one. And I personally appreciate it because I think that's what it takes to make it work. But the other has, the others have not been operated quite that way.
I appreciate what you're saying about communicating and talking to each other. I think you have to know what's going on in other cities, though, to have ideas to talk to each other about. And that's where Greg Leroy, I think, could help us this week. And I, and you have to know, for example, like restricting where the school spends their money. If we had, if we had a built-in mechanism for comparing ourselves to other cities, I don't think that would have happened, because we would have seen the other, they're not doing it that way. We would, if we study the duration, we might, we might change things. If we look at how other cities are doing things like payments in lieu of taxes as a way to minimize impact on schools, we might. But unless you know about those alternatives, you can't talk to the school, you can't negotiate or craft something different if you don't know what your different options are. And that's where I think the utility of looking at best practices in other cities really comes in and can help us. His plane lands at 12 noon on Thursday. He's met with city councilors and school board members in cities across America. And he's happy to meet with anyone here. We'll get him to your office or wherever you are if you, if you want to meet with him that Thursday afternoon before the town hall meeting.
Don't take it, don't take anything I've said as a disparagement of what you're doing, because it's not that at all. But I think to some extent, that's one facet of it. The other facet is, we've got an obligation to do a better job communicating ourselves and being communicated and demanding that we be communicated with. And I think that's, I think that's happening. I think that's, I'm optimistic that, that the information deficit that the board has had, the school board has, is being closed rapidly. I know there's been a meeting since then, since the meeting a week ago Monday, there's been a meeting of staff that they came away, know a whole lot more about it than they do, because it was a much smaller meeting. They were able to formulate questions ahead of time. And so I'm optimistic that we're on the right track. I'm not so sure that I don't agree with Ed that there are some dramatic changes need to be made. But that's, that's when we figure out what the dramatic changes are. And one of the ways to find that out is to listen to people that talk about it from other cities, so.
Okay, moving along, if there's no further discussion, citizens to be heard. Joe Sarge Nelson.
Hello, I'm Joe Sarge Nelson. Golly, I've never had so much attention in my life. I've been coming here for two and a half years, almost three years, being the biggest bully the city all has ever had. And I very rarely give my word, and when I give it, I keep it. And my honor is just about everything I got. When I came being a bully all the time, I kept thinking, well, I was going to make things different, make things better. Just because I read something in the paper about what one of you all did, what you didn't do, the rails, everything about the MAPS project. I'm one person, there's thousands of us out here. I may not agree with you, but being a bully doesn't change a thing. It just makes you a bigger ass than you were when you walked in, excuse the expression, ladies. And that's what I became. Well, Mr. McAtee and Mr. Pettis was at this organization where I found out where I live, I live out in Mr. McAtee's area, have gone out of the lobbies. It's a privately owned outfit. We have 300 lots out there, and the only way you can live there, you have to own your own home. And that's a mobile home, by the way. I've lived there for 10 years, and I've seen things come and go. And I kept saying, well, may I go down to the city and see what I can get done? Well, when you bully people, you're, they're going to hear you, but they don't hear you. That's the way you don't get things done. Well, I was invited to go to a class, and I thought, oh, here I go at 77 years old, I'm going to go to school. So I go down to Metro Tech on Bryant, and I met the lady, Reggie, I call her Reggie for the better word. Three hours in the very first night, she laid the plan out, she said it, like he said, go to all these classes, but at the end of the class, at the end of the thing, at graduation, put together a plan of what you've done for somebody else to make a difference. Well, after you went through seven of the nine of these courses, of which Mr. McAtee was at one, Mr. Pettis was at there twice. In fact, he gave me kind of an ovation at one night. But anyway, to make a long story short, I know you all are busy. I owe you all an apology. Mr. Grenier, Mr. Shadid, Pete, Mr. Jordan, I've spoke to, and Mr. Couch, most assuredly. I asked you to resign, which was the biggest mistake I ever made. You can only be a fool so many times in your life, and sooner or later, you got to address yourself in that mirror. And boy, it slaps harder than most people hit you. And Mr. McAtee, I always wanted him to smile, but even when he's in a joyous mood, he had his lovely wife there the other night. Saturday night was the biggest night I've ever had. I got a little piece of paper from the Neighborhood Alliance. You all, you'd have to understand... Alliance. You all, you'd have to understand, I fought everything I fought for, for my family. I'm the only son. I'm 77-years-old. I've accomplished not a damn thing. Nothing. My mother and dad's gone now. I've been a Navy man. Mr. David Davis Little credentials here some while back. I'm the smallest Navy SEAL in history. I retired in 1975, not from the military, but from wounds in action and naturally from the Social Security. But I want to apologize to you. I shook your hand when you came aboard. I attacked you for no reason, and I attacked you generally. And I've even made my few remarks about Mrs. Cursey, which was long over under the belt. And Mr. McAtee, you never did smile, but then again, everybody has their nature. There's something inside of everybody. And Mr. Couch, believe it or not, I do really care about this council. There's eight of you. You come from all different walks of life. You come, all the communities are all different. You have to live with a lot of different people. You deal with the situations the best you can with what tools you've got. We're not millionaires, and you can't pay everything. It's just like going home. You gotta pay your bills. Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. And Mr. Jordan, I owe you an apology. I've seen you a few times walking, and I meet, me and Pete, got acquainted pretty good, co-vert Civic Center, walking across City Hall one day. And Mr. Shadid and I got pretty well acquainted, one, he is my doctor in reality. I haven't seen him in a while. I haven't been sick along that line. I've been sick elsewhere, besides up here. And Jim, it's been great watching y'all come aboard. The only time you'll ever see me here again is to either sit in and listen or fight a fight that really needs fighting, but you'll already be fighting it to begin with. I'd like to be part of the team rather than be against it. And you have my deepest respect. Glad to have you aboard. And it's a hard job, but you'll get there. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll bid you adieu. Have a good day.
Thank you, Joe Sarge. Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, we are adjourned.